Good to go.
Thank you, Kyle. Good afternoon, everyone. It's May 25, 2023. This is the GBOs special meeting regarding GBOs reorganization airport lease HLB plans. The Gerwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Gerwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Gerwood Public Meetings Standards of Conduct. I will call this meeting to order at 12:02. I am Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor. Online, let's start with Mike.
Mike Edgington, Co-Chair and Land Use Supervisor.
And then Guy.
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
And Amanda.
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety Supervisor.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Are there any disclosures this afternoon? Seeing and hearing none, I will move on to announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public, and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. And we have our quorum, of course, and if Jennifer attends, I will state that for the record. We'll move on to agenda approval. I did not ask for an approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda, but I may have an amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Guy. What's your amendment?
Given that Jennifer isn't here, I'm wondering if we can move item number one a little further down. Let's say, let's say, starting on two, then three, then four, then one. Or actually, two, then three, then one, then four.
Okay, two, three, one, four for the organization order. Is there a second?
Can the second or second that?
Thank you, Guy, for seconding. Any further discussion on that? Okay, we will vote on the amendment for the agenda with roll call.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
The agenda as amended passes 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to do anything further with that agenda, Kyle?
I don't think so.
Okay, let's go to number two, which is discuss and vote on 2023 Gerwood Forest Fair Letter of Non-Objection and Fee Waiver. So Karen Sakaro is here in the room, and I'll turn it over to whoever's speaking first.
I can speak to it first. Let me pull up the packet here so we can just talk about that.
Thank you, Kyle.
Sorry, this packet's got a lot of info on it. We are moving through permitting pretty quick. As always, we're always lagged by I skipped right over it, sorry. Here it is. We're always delayed by other departments, and so Karen's been doing a great job of gathering all the information. Their insurance finally came through, so that was a huge hurdle, and that's what really delays us on permitting. It's just having the current insurance for this year. So all fees and in this list here is all the items that we've received for the permit process, and we're still just waiting on approved noise and right-of-way permit. Those work together through the MOA, approved HLB camping permit, which should be any day now, and then AFD, Anchorage Fire Department Operational Permit, which is probably the most significant, as they review that pretty heavily, and since there's open flame cooking going on, they tend to analyze that. So, but they've seen it before, so things haven't changed much, so we hope that it helps. And then the alcohol permits from the ABC, the State of Alaska, and then a parking agreement with Aliesca, which is challenging because there's new players up there, so you have to educate them about this parking agreement properly, and so it's made it challenging. But I'll turn it over to Karen, and Karen, if you want to get updated, anything, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. And Jennifer Wingard is in the room for the record.
Thank you, Kyle. I wanted to say thank you to all the people that volunteered, Gerwood GBOs members, and thank you to Kyle and Margaret for all their assistance in helping our nonprofit and volunteers stay organized and on top of it. So yeah, following up with what Kyle said, our permit to the alcohol permit is in process. AFD, we're very optimistic because we had a meeting with the fire chief here and talked first from the reviewer, and he's our reviewer, so we feel pretty confident that we're good there. And then, yeah, everything else, we are in discussions with Aliesca Resort, we just haven't had a chance to get the face-to-face. Took a while to figure out who's the next person to coordinate with, but we are talking about it. So we're very optimistic. We're not seeing any showstoppers. One of the ones I think I've mentioned a couple of times that I was worried about was traffic control, but we do have a traffic control contractor, so that's all on board. And if anyone has any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions from the board? Anyone online?
I do have one question, yeah. What's the We've had this issue with parking capacity in the past, and I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing this lots of background noise. I'll try again. The, there's been obviously problems later in the day with parking, and I know we have the buses hopefully will help this year, but do you know if parking capacity is much reduced from previous years?
Parking capacity is unchanged, pending our agreement with Aliesca Resort. We are optimistic that we're pushing the bus much harder. We have more buses on Saturday and Sunday, and we're encouraging anybody that signs up for vendors or camping or anything to purchase a bus ticket. So that's a primary way that we're trying to alleviate pressure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Anything else that you have, Kyle?
No, you know, and just to maybe quickly on the parking, you know, we had a lot of success last year with towing and impowing and the roving patrols out there to deal with that, so that'll help alleviate especially a lot of public safety concerns, especially fire access into the residential areas. So we'll be setting that up again this year and working through that. So, but yeah, we are seeking a vote from the board as for a letter of non-objection to the fee waiver and to the pen.
Thank you. And on this list here in the packet is the task list, that there's those very few items that still need to be approved, and then what we could do would be approve the letter of non- objection contingent upon the task list, and then Kyle would be the one to tell us that it's all checked off at that time. So it's up to the body.
I will move that we do that, that we give the letter of non-objection with those specifications about the tasks.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Is there a second to that motion?
I couldn't quite hear what Jennifer said. It was slightly garbled, sorry.
Okay. She basically made the motion I suggested, but I don't know how to state it.
Yes. I made the motion that Brianna suggested. I made the motion that we give the letter of non-objection for sphere pending completion of the tasks as listed and per approval from our area supervisor.
Okay, thank you. So Kyle would basically sign off on those, and as soon as he's happy, the letter of non-objection becomes valid. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Excellent. Yeah, I'll second. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion from the board?
No, I think the letter already says that, doesn't it?
Letter of objection says that.
Yeah, the letter will be held until fully, full permitting is complete, so.
All right. Hearing nothing else, we can do a roll call vote, please.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for being here, Karen, and all the work. Okay, we have rearranged the agenda, so the next item is number three. Discuss request for comment period extension and possible action on ADA 09547 proposal to lease state airport land at the Gerwood Airport. So first, we could discuss the results of our request for extension, and then how to produce our formal comments during the time needed. Would like to start or stop?
I would, I'll start off, but I'd like to request of staff, I did not get to see a response from DOT, so I assume that means there's a no. Did we, did we receive anything?
No, we did not receive a response from DOT.
I know they did extend it already by one week, so I think the, I was told when I spoke to them that it's very unlikely, but that was before we were formally asked.
Thank you, Mike. And yesterday was the last day they had to respond. Okay. Okay, Mike.
Yeah, so I'm still getting a lot of comments from the, from other people in the community, as I'm sure we all are, and we're seeing various, various thoughts and comments. I'm not quite at a point where I could draft a letter, but I probably could soon. So what I'm, what I'm going to request is we should read the letter that came from Glacier Valley Lodge. I don't know if there, I see John online, I don't know if anyone's in the, in the audience from that group. It, if there's, if they're interested in talking with the community again before the end of, before the deadline, I don't know if that's better, if they do that independently, or if it's done through an LUC or GBOs meeting, I'm not actually sure. I value the opinion of the board on that. But what I think we can, if there is an intent to have an additional discussion before the end of the comment period, then I think I'd like to listen to that and then have a, have a draft response after that.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Tim Treadwell is here, and then John's online, as far as I know. Any comments from the board first?
Just to verify, DOT is July 11th? Am I right about that for comment deadline?
June.
I mean, June, June 12th.
Yes, which is a Monday, and it needs to be postmarked before then, so we would need to do basically the eighth, Thursday, the eighth, and in the mail on Friday, the ninth, I think.
And to reiterate, the DOT's position is this is the only opportunity for formal public comment throughout the whole process.
Yes, so Tim, just come one chair forward, please. So yes, Mike, this is DOT's only public comment period, but as we go through the process of getting a building permit, they, we do anticipate other public comment periods.
I understand. See, that's discussion with the, with the developer, but not through DOT, correct?
Through the developer and through possible permits that we will need to apply for.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Guy, you're unmuted. Do you have anything else, just in case?
Yeah.
That's fine. You weren't making noise. I just didn't know. It's easier. Well, we could scroll through just a little bit, but this was the letter that was in the package from Tim and Mr. Faulkner, Mr. Treadwell and Mr. Faulkner for today's meeting, but yesterday. And I'm not sure what the board feels if scheduling another meeting through our staff and/or land use with this subject or this letter as kind of a standing gesture to be involved throughout the process. But back to the initial item on our agenda is the DOT common period, and that is what is due first. And these items A or D are more beyond that timeframe. Anyone online can go ahead and speak up. There's no need to raise your hand.
We do have a regular meeting on the fifth, is that correct?
No, not correct.
No.
Let me see. The fifth is Monday. There's a PSAC meeting, I believe. We just have this extra week in May this, this year, calendar year. And Mr. Faulkner has his hand up, so I'll go ahead. John, if you could.
Yes, can you hear, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, great.
Well, I'm obviously here on behalf of Glacier Valley Lodge, but I want to defer to Mr. Treadwell. But Mr. Edgington did ask the question, would be, would we be available to meet before the deadline? And I think the clarification to that is yes, emphatically. So if that, you know, bears on your analysis, and Mr. Treadwell concurs, we would love to meet you before the deadline, if that's appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else from the board before we, my next suggestion would be to, besides the two items, number three and number four on our agenda would be scheduling another time, which is sort of separate than that, but we should choose two people to work on this formal comment, so it's due and.
So what I was
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, the, I think there's, there's still, there's still interest, I believe, from the community to understand more about this. And obviously, we're not, DOT is not going to give us any more information, and I understand that there's commercial imperatives not to say too much from the developers either, but I think if, my feeling is another opportunity to, to both get feedback from the community and to ask questions and get answers as far as we can would be helpful. I think we can draft something based on our current understanding in the meantime. If the, if we are running another meeting on this topic and inviting the, inviting the developers to that, then we can, you know, add our response and any changes to it to the end of that meeting. Otherwise, we should still schedule, I think, another meeting to go through any draft letter. So I kind of agree with where, where I think you were going, Brianna, of, I think we should have a, allocate two people to write a draft response, and then either have a meeting just to discuss that and solidify it, or ideally have a meeting which includes the developers and gives the community an opportunity to ask other questions, because obviously today isn't it. I think we only have, we only have a couple of people online.
Yes. Thank you, Mike. Any other comments from the board? Jennifer?
So I was reviewing my notes from the public meeting, and it sounds like you could roughly categorize the community's concerns around road, view shed and impact on moose meadows, and overall issues with current limitations at the airport already. Just roughly, that's my, my rough guess, the three primary areas. And I, I'm not sure I heard actual answers to those concerns at the last meeting. So unless, unless we're going to get answers, I'm not sure where, I don't know if it's worth the time.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I guess that's a question for, for you guys.
Yes, we are willing to share information that will not jeopardize our, our application with the state, and we're willing to have a planning session where we bring up sticky notes and a map and can go over that. We talked about that internally with the team. If that would be helpful to the community, we're willing to do that, and, and go over this, the application for the landladies. There are those three sections that we had, the airport facility, the aeronautical facility, the lodge, and the ancillary facility for winter sports, and those are the three main components to the application. Whether we can go into detail or into them before the June 12th comment period is done, has been discussed internally with the team, and there's bits and pieces that we were willing to go into detail. And so if that's something that can be scheduled that you're willing, that you want to do before the June 12th meeting, we can, we can do that. But we do have to be sensitive with a lot of information because of this public notice period is open to competitive, and that is some of its proprietary information that could be seen as competitive.
Mike.
Yes, we're willing to, to answer those questions to an extent. After the June 12th period, that can be opened up deeper.
Thank you.
May I just get a follow-up on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It sounds to me like from the answers that you gave before at the previous meeting, you're not really in a position right now to be able to address some of the road concerns, you know, and specifically whether or not that's going to end up being paved, if, when, or how. Correct me if I'm wrong. And then it sounded to me like we, I didn't hear a specific answer, and if, if you can't give one yet, about the concerns around both the taxiway and the current tie-down situation, and then lastly, the effects on the, the view shed. I mean, I guess what I'm, I really appreciate your openness, but if you can't be open about those specific questions, I'm not sure it's worth messing with. And that's not, I mean, I totally understand yours, the situation you're in, but then the situation we're in too is we're coming into summer, we're busy.
Yeah, no, it's, it's something we, we should discuss internally with our team to see what information is willing to release. We, when we approached DOT with this application, those were all points that DOT hit on, and those were all points that we had to figure out before we submitted a complete application. So it's something that we have thought about, that we have discussed in depth, and we need to discuss internally with our team what we're willing to share before the June 12th period, but we do have answers to those questions. This is my point that I'm getting to.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I also share the same, some of the concern Jennifer's expressing, that you're in a situation where certain questions will not be able to be answered, and that was a great session last meeting with lots of concerns brought up and questions, but they're like open-ended questions, because people probably understood they wouldn't be answered, but brought up as points. So if it's not affecting the, the top concerns that we would only be mentioning for the DOT, because this is just going to DOT essentially, I would just be concerned that it would be a lot of effort for, people would probably still learn a lot, but I don't know how, how essential it is. So not opposed though, at all.
Well, I think from, from our perspective of just answering, of providing a letter to DOT, we're not in a position where we have a draft now, so we can't act on it today and approve a letter. So we at least, GBOs has to have, we have to have a follow-up to, to approve a letter. So we'll have to do something. I think there is a question about whether, you know, whether that's broader and require, you know, is a much more of a community event or not. But I think in any way, we still have to schedule something. So I'll stick with, so I'm just going to suggest that we, I don't know, this has to be a motion, but I suggest that we allocate two people to draft a letter, and then at a later meeting come back and, and approve it, or at least discuss it and maybe approve it.
Thank you, Mike. And let's then discuss who would be willing or interested in writing the letter, or if someone wants to nominate someone. I am happy to work on this letter if other people are having busy times in the next week and a half. And anyone else, please speak up if you'd like to.
I'm interested in responding to definitely addressing some of the, this is outside discussion with the developer, but addressing some of the issues about DOT's involvement versus land use versus our plans, et cetera, et cetera. So at least one, I'd like to be involved to draft that part a lot, at least.
Thank you, Mike. Any other thoughts from the board? Objection?
I'm, I'm gonna be partly off-grid on and off in the next few weeks, so I'm probably, unfortunately, probably not the best choice.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. And well, we will still all be approving this letter soon. Any other comments from the board?
Can I just ask if I'm going to be drafting it? Jennifer, is there anything you want to make sure is included and addressed that you haven't talked about this evening or at the previous meeting?
No, primarily those, those three general areas.
Yeah, I agree. I think they're the three main community concerns.
Quick comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was a good list, Jennifer. I did hear mentioned a couple different times, drainage and that, so I would recommend, if possible, including that in your letter as well.
Yeah, I agree. I think from a, yeah, from a, from a service area point, drainage and other, other disruption costs is definitely a factor, and then again, the relationship to land use. But I think the community had three main concerns: recreational view shed, impact on the airport, and
Road.
Road. Thank you. I just forgot the word road.
No worries.
I'm getting to that age.
Okay, that's a great consensus, and if no one's opposed, it sounds like Mike and I are volunteering to work on the letter, and then next, somewhere on this meeting this afternoon, we'll be choosing some dates to choose from for that, that meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. Any thoughts more from the board?
Yeah, one other thing, if we are going to do a meeting where we approve that letter, then I would like to invite the team for sure to share whatever information you are ready to share. I mean, I, I guess I don't see any reason, if we had to do that meeting anyway, not to turn it into an opportunity for the community to learn more about it, whatever you guys can share. And I certainly appreciate that attitude and that. It's really refreshing. So if, if you guys can, come prepared to answer more questions, I guarantee you welcome that.
Of course. Yes, we'll be there.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes. Thank you, Tim and John. Anything else on this item? For now? Okay.
I'd just like, I'll just like to echo the same thing of thank you for the, thank you for the letter and the, and the commitment to having further discussions as we go through this. Thanks.
Yes, Mike.
Okay, Mike. Okay, our revision goes now to number one on the agenda, and that is our reorganization or lack thereof of the supervisor roles. And this time of year, we go through them again, and if anyone would like to start a different role, or we also now have a new power, so there are more than before to reorganize. So if anyone wants to start thoughts, please go ahead. I've been written down.
I'd, I'd go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Go.
So I do think that with the new power, we should probably reorganize. I would like to make the case that potentially public safety and road maintenance utilities could be combined to be one committee or supervisor role, because often, at least with parking and road enforcement, the public safety and roads overlap. So that, and then keep all the rest of the same, and then add the new housing and economic development is my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. So I'd be PSAC and roads utilities you're suggesting as one supervisor role.
I'm going to make an alternative suggestion, not that I don't disagree, I I'm going to make an alternative suggestion, not that I don't disagree, I don't agree with that, I just haven't thought through it, but the, I was thinking about potentially combining fire and police together, leaving roads and utility together. Leaving parks and rec cemetery together and then having land use separate and housing and economic development separate. But I would be interested in hearing the feedback from people who've recently held the police and fire department roles as to whether they should or should not be combined. Which includes, I know, which includes Amanda, and she just suggested something different, so.
Right. Thank you, Mike. First, we'll go with Jennifer.
So I I had actually made this same suggestion and Guy, if you'll forgive me, like talking to Guy about it. And he kind of talked me out of it. And I, having been both road safety and public utilities, I I do think it would combine well. I think a big part of it is is workload. So I think Mike, maybe you and I were both looking at it kind of from a logical viewpoint, but strictly in terms of workload, I think this might be a better balance.
Which which balance say?
Oh, sorry, the one suggested by Amanda.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of, I agree with Amanda's grouping there. I I get where you're going. I mean, public safety is fire and police. Fire can be pretty busy, just based on my experience, you know, there's a lot of emails and a lot of chat, a lot of things going on, you know, on a weekly basis. Not that roads aren't, but yeah, I don't know if, you know, time wise, that that was my only concern when when Jennifer brought it up was combining those two. Fire is can be quite alone.
Uh, thank you. Oh, Amanda, go ahead.
Thank you. I, yeah, I I agree that the, and honestly, originally I was but just really at the start of this meeting, I realized, yeah, the workload of fire department is probably a lot more than natural. It seems natural that police and fire would go together, but I actually have heard being on public safety and roads also. I've heard more about the overlap of roads and public safety than the overlap of fire and public safety, in my opinion. At least here in Girdwood, they do respond sometimes for like domestic violence together. But it's it's not as much as parking and speeding, you know, like we're talking about the road. Timberline access to try to reduce speed there. And that's, you know, public safety and it's a road issue, so it it actually does seem to make sense.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah. So I I am, I am absolutely convinced by everyone else who's got more recent experience than I have that police and fire should not be combined. So I agree with that. However, I've got another suggestion. I see utilities and there is a utilities obviously has some connection with road, but then it also has some connection with land use sometimes. So the the thing I don't like from a just a kind of aesthetic point of view, I suppose, is to have three, three things put together with one supervisor. And then the others will have one or one and a half with cemetery. So I'm wondering, I'm going to make a slightly different suggestion then that we have roads and police together, land use and utilities together, parks and rec and cemetery together. Fire department by itself and housing and economic development by itself. So basically, it's the suggestion Amanda made, but move utilities with land use rather than roads and place. But again, I'd be interested in feedback from people who've had the roads, roads and utilities role recently.
Hmm, Jennifer.
I had, I had utilities. This is Tommy Amelie. I had utilities. It was nothing.
Right.
We did visit the the wellhouse and I saw the button that you could push to stop the chlorine or no, the fluoride being added. And I wasn't tempted because I knew it was against the law.
Great.
You're not, is that your announcement for mayor, Tommy?
Getting some trouble, Mike. So can I take?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay. I would, again, just, again, I can absolutely see the logic in that, Mike. But I think in terms of the labor involved, the truth of the matter is there. It's not just three things under one. I mean, really having the the role that Kyle is filling fundamentally changed what it meant to be a road supervisor. I mean, I've talked to numerous people who've had that, had that role prior to Kyle coming on board and it was pretty horrific. But it is now really a fairly marginal role with no, at least no monthly meetings, you know. And there are times when it comes, things come up, but it is, it is nothing, I think, compared to land use. I hesitate to add anything on to land use. That role is ginormous in and of itself. When I look at the agenda on any given times, I see land use supervisor, land use supervisor, land use supervisor, right? So I just hesitate to add anything on to that. That would be my voice. And and I would also say, having done these roads, utilities and public safety, I I don't consider that combination owners at all, but it looks like Amanda has her hand up, so maybe she has feedback.
Okay, thank you. Amanda.
Oh, thank you. I I was gonna agree with Jennifer and that. And and kind of with Mike, I mean, utilities, there was, when I was doing it for just one season, that we didn't really have anything happen, but we didn't have a Halloween storm, you know, either. So I I don't see that it'd be too much extra work necessarily for land use, but it could if something happened. And, you know, it all, the utilities in if something happens, does still fall under a lot with road maintenance and public safety. And because there's only the public safety, which is only required to have quarterly meetings, but generally has monthly meetings that sometimes doesn't have a quorum that we're getting better about that. And then roads doesn't have meetings and neither does utilities. So it, I don't think that having three, even though it looks like a lot. I don't, I don't think it'd be that bad, so.
Thank you, Amanda and Jennifer for your comments. I have not been in those roles, but I've attended all of the meetings that are in each of these roles. But I can see the overlap in utilities on three of the roles. So what I'm hearing so far is while we're all acknowledging that this could work in a few different ways, that public safety stays with roads and utilities and that land use is land use, even in its an all in all inclusive job. And then the other two stay the way they are so far. But open to further discussion?
Well, yeah, that that sounds good to me, you know, maybe next go around, we could revisit it. This housing economic development may take some of those line items off of land use, you know, and some of the burden off land use. But because a lot of that fell under there, but I think for this go around, well, I like that Amanda's suggestion, so.
Thank you, Guy, for that point. Go ahead.
Guy said pretty much what I was going to say. I think land use will will reduce with the housing and economic development role, but I agree, actually. The, I think we could, we should stick with road maintenance, utility and police. Can we say police rather than public safety? Because public safety typically does incorporate fire or does encompass fire. So we should probably say police service when we're referring to it. So I'm basically agreeing with Amanda's position now. Combine A, B and E.
Thank you. Just in case, Kyle, do you have anything to add before anything?
No, you guys basically sorted out what I was going to say, so I think those roles are accurate.
Okay. Do, do we need to do anything formally with these before we set roles?
I would think if we're, if we're, it sounds like we're agreed on what the roles will be, so I think we can just allocate them and have a vote on the allocation.
All right, so now let's dive into supervisor roles with anyone like Amanda, your hands up, so go for it.
Thank you. I would like, I have some good projects going with police right now, and I would really like to continue with my role with the police service and do the new category of police, roads and utilities.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Anyone else? Have any feedback? And I would just say really quickly that, well, I considered changing any roles based on other people's preferences. A year goes by very fast. And so if if projects were started or you were just starting a new role in the last year, it probably feels like it flew and you're not ready to change, but that's, that's my, my take. Amanda?
And of course, Jennifer, I I understand that would be taking the role you're currently in. So I would, you know, respectfully ask if you're amenable to that change.
I'd be delighted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then Jennifer, I'll ask you some, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. Sorry, who's? Okay, yeah, so I'd like, obviously Title VII, I've been very interested, invested in. So I would very much like to take the housing and economic development role. And last year I did say I was going to stop land use after last year, so I would like to stop the land use role. And let someone else enjoy that.
Right. Thank you, Mike, for refreshing our memory, mine, you made for that. Any, any comments on Mike's preference for H?
Yeah, I was looking at either housing or LUC, and I'm a little torn because I mean, housing has been a passion of mine as well. But it'd be, I mean, I guess to be polite, just for once, I'd be inclined to defer.
To C.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So I'm sure you can always help with the other roles. But thank you for being agreeable. And Mike did all that. Land use, we appreciate everything and ready to move on from land use. So it's open that in that case, if he prefers, does. Guy?
Yeah. This is basically my second year on fire and I've enjoyed it, but I wouldn't mind jumping onto another committee. I don't know. Brianna, if you're right in the middle of your parks and cemetery work, or do you want to swap places there?
Thank you, Guy. I, that is my only part of contention, I guess, or if I cemetery has been taking years and years to to do what it's doing anyway. So that is the only place where I feel a slight obligation, but I would be happy to try another role and I'm fine with you pushing. But I feel like I might be. I feel like it's okay to be involved a little bit in cemetery, whether it's me coming to the meetings, but not calling it the role.
I would, I would welcome your knowledge in in the transition and and, you know, any input you have for sure. So the institutional knowledge will be very important for me to catch, you know, catching up on that. And with Tommy's help and yours, and I think I could get up to speed and, but yeah, your input in the future would be valued.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, one of the discussions, given that cemetery is likely to become an area wide power relatively soon, is whether we actually hold on to that at all after this year. So I'm wondering if given, if you're, if you are interested in changing roles, Brianna and Guy, I'm wondering if it makes sense for the cemetery role to stay with Brianna, even if she moves to fire and just have, you know, maybe for one year only cemetery and fire go together.
Thanks for that suggestion, Mike. And because it is, the assembly pushed it to June to vote on an area wide power. And we then, before then or pretty soon would need to discuss what to do with that power. But that would kind of make more sense to me to leave the role, not floating, but I could have that, that duty, I guess. And then while you still take it on and learn about it, Guy, with whatever happens to that supervisor role, so that made any sense. But otherwise, those comments, I think, lay out what what everyone would like first from June and on. Any final statements from the board? Would anyone like to put any of that in a motion?
Actually, prior to that.
Go ahead.
I have a kind of a question. This has come up several times about voice and representation. And that's, I I just kind of want to be clear that our I view all of our our roles as coordinating with those aspects of the community, but not necessarily speaking for them. So, for example, land use certainly has its own voice and it would be its land use supervisors role to just bring that to GBOS. So I want to make sure that that's the housing role too. And and the reason why this is coming up is because I know that we've got negotiations underway for Holden Hills coming back. And I, and I just want to make sure that our committee has chooses its voice for engaging with the assembly on that. And that we don't assume as GBOS that we're that, like, we specifically form that community to be, or sorry, that committee to be our community voice. I mean, yes, it has to come through GBOS, but we form that committee to make the suggestions. And so similar to way HHHAC brought in their representatives to deal or to to try to negotiate with the developer and HOB, I would, I just want to clarify for the record, that's the way that I see that that's the way that I would hope that this would work again, because we, we brought those people into a committee in good faith with the understanding that they were developing community voice. I want to make sure they have the opportunity to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
I think there are some nuances around this, so. And I, I think the, I think the point was Jennifer was making was directed primarily at me. So we as supervisors, we're elected by the full community to represent the community. And when we're acting in a role within the, or when we're representing the board, we're representing all the board or the board's collective opinion, not our individual opinion. Subcommittee or committees are that, they're committees, they're not, they don't supplant what we as individuals and we as a board have positions on. So we as a board, when we make a board decision, any of us can represent that. We can also speak as individuals and have our own positions and the boards and the subcommittees can have their own positions. And they are sometimes slightly distinct. What I don't think we should do, and we definitely, well, I will not do, is is say that I don't have a voice as an elected member of the community. I do not as elected representative of the community, I have to defer. I can't, I cannot make my own opinion of my own voice heard when a appointed subcommittee makes a different decision. I think that's fine. It's absolutely fine to have differences and it's fine to have a broader range of voices. So the point of the committee is to have that broad range of voices, but it does not supplant us as elected members. So there's kind of a subtlety here, and I think the there's a, I think Jennifer used the phrase speaking for, and I completely agree that we don't speak for committees, committees have their own voices. So I guess I'm agreeing with you, but there's some nuance around it.
Thanks, Mike. And thank you, Jennifer. Right, acknowledging there's nuances.
Sorry, not quite the, there are nuances. I I just I just want to clarify, and I don't think we're far off on this at all necessarily, but I I want to make sure there was confusion. We, I think we all know that there was confusion. I want to acknowledge that confusion that happened last year in which members of the assembly thought that because they were talking to one specific person, that they were talking to a community voice. And we did have an unfortunate situation last year in which there were opinions. in which there were opinions coming out of land use that were not reflected from some of the opinions coming out of GBOSS. And it was, it was a super interesting thing to have happen. And it was particularly hard during a time of stress to express to the Assembly that we weren't necessarily united when we needed to be united. So we didn't express that we weren't necessarily united. And we, we stayed behind the importance of having one voice. But it got problematic, particularly in, I think you saw it in the emotions of that vote on February 7th. There were, there were some emotions that I'm still trying to parse out, if I'm still listening to the recordings around the Assembly members' reactions. And I think some of it had to do almost with a sense of betrayal, like we're trying to make something happen and you said you were going to be okay with this. But our land use committee and our HHHAC had not said that they were going to be okay with either the S or the S2. And now we have the floating back, like some kind of zombie. So I just want to be really clear, when that zombie comes back up, that our community voice is heard by the Assembly, not just specific GBOSS voices.
Are you trying to say, Jennifer, the the quote "community voice" is somebody who the, let's be very specific, that the Housing and Economic Development Committee, so one of the, as a group of seven people, they will elect one person to be chair probably, or maybe they'll do co-chairs, who knows? And they've been appointed by us. So are you saying that is, that person is the community voice?
As I understand it, with a, that that person, well, that's a good question. We, we specifically said that that person was a community voice when we drew parallel, drawing the parallel, sorry. In HHHAC, we specifically said that those people were negotiating for the community with the developer and the HOB. But then somehow or another, they were not the people that were then working with the Assembly. And so that created, that created, I think, a disconnect. And I just want to make sure we don't end up with that disconnect again, because that puts the, both the community at a disadvantage and the representatives of the community at a disadvantage, right? Now we've, now we've, now we're second guessing each other publicly, which we don't want to do. So I, I think, yes, that chair is our, that's, that's my perspective, yes, that chair. But that, but their decisions do have to be approved by GBOSS. But then at that point, I would prefer the chair of our housing, our housing committee to be the one who is the voice of what Gerdwood is looking for for housing.
Okay, and so first of all, let's address one of the things you said there, that we as a body chose HHHAC to negotiate on behalf of. We actually didn't do that. What we actually asked them to do is present the community opinions and some community options, not to actually negotiate. There was a clear distinction. I think we might, I know we made it clear. We attempted to make it clear multiple times. I'm surprised there's still a misunderstanding about that.
Okay, excuse the verb, Mike, excuse the verb, please, but watch your tone.
So which, which verb?
I'm sorry if I use the word negotiate when that's not the word you wanted, but they were specifically there to present and then to bring back. If you don't want to call that negotiation, that's fine.
Yeah, 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 I think there's a, there is a clear distinction between the two. So we are on the same page. We both agree, great. I forgot the other thing I was gonna say. Yeah, I think the other thing about the Assembly is the Assembly members do their own thing. They can, you know, actually, just up to three of them can work on anything. And they reach out to connections they typically already have. I don't think they, I think the example, if you're, it sounded again like a criticism of of the discussions that I had with with Meg that led to an S2 version. Oh, well, she, I was one of the many voices she was speaking to that led to an S2 version. She asked my opinion on stuff and I gave it. I gave both my personal opinion and what I felt the general community thought. And I would continue to do that in the future.
Okay, I'm going to ask that we keep discussion on this item, but note that where we stand when we are representing our roles and our voice as a body, which is always probably going to be something every board has a challenge with. So I would, if I don't hear anymore, I'll suggest that we vote in Amanda for A, B, and E, Jennifer for C, Guy for D, and potentially F, depending on what happens to that power. Brianna for G, and Mike for H. Would anyone like to move that?
Actually, sorry. I'd like to put my name in for the housing instead.
Okay, and I'm sorry I used letters, but because I can actually read them all. So Jennifer would like to be considered for H for the Housing Economic Development Supervisor Role. Guy? Your hands up, go for it.
Yeah, can we take, remove the ambiguity of the cemetery role and and just combine the two and go forward as a single voice? Or do we need to separate those or add potentially?
No, I, I think they don't need to be separated. We can keep it D and F. Because whatever happens to it, it will need one of us at least. And we're allowed to vote of those, the committee, it's a committee meeting, and Tommy is the chair of that. So I'm, I'll say it correctly, Parks and Recreation Cemetery.
Any other comments? If not, it sounds like we have two people interested in Housing and Economic Development. So what would you feel most comfortable with us doing for that decision? Kyle?
May I suggest voting on the ones that seem there's no challenge for the positions? And just going with those first and then we can come to, to those. So it sounds like Parks and Rec, Parks and Cemetery, Road Maintenance, Police, Utilities, and Fire all have nominees without contest. So if somebody wants to make a motion, we can determine that and then go to figure out the next one.
Okay.
I'll move to, yeah, myself as Police and Roads Utilities. Brianna, Fire Department, and Guy, Parks Rec and Cemetery.
Any second? Thank you, Amanda.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Jennifer. Any further discussion? Any objections? We'll, we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
But that motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we're last two, two supervisors and two roles. Any suggestions?
I'll move that. So who do you want to go first?
Well, you go.
I think, I think, I think I know what we're both going to suggest, so it's the same thing, I guess. I would suggest that I move that Housing and Economic Development is Mike Edgington and Land Use is Jennifer Wingard.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second so we can discuss it? I think it could be discussed.
I'll second. This is Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay. Any discussion on motion?
I can go first?
Go for it.
I would just say that Mike has worked, done the land use supervisor position for, I think, three, maybe four years now. So I, I think that that might be a good time for, yeah, him to transition out of that role. He did a great job. I really appreciate the work you've done, Mike. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Can I just say that I think whatever, whatever outcome, whichever way around these, these two positions end up with, they have to work very well together and closely together. So I look forward to doing that with Jennifer, whatever role we both end up in.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate both of those comments because, well, it also seems some people don't know what our roles are, but they just know we're on GBOSS. But we all have important jobs just as the body. And then our supervisor roles are arguably just as important, but not always acknowledged by everyone. So, or the community, you could say, because they have a different supervisor like Kyle or Margaret or Chief Weston. So we're just communicating those in our capacity as volunteers. So we all need to work together on that. Jennifer?
Okay, I think we're gonna be fine regardless, however this shakes out. It's gonna be great. And I think either way, both boards end up with spectacular representatives, right, Mike? But
All of them. Fails as well and fire and roads and everything.
Stella, Stella. But I would like to, I would like to just say that I have spent, I spend hours and hours every week. This last year has been extraordinary. The, the amount of work and networking that I have tried to do about housing. I think it's the fundamental issue for our community. And I don't, I don't want to form our community's viewpoint about it. But I, I do, I do end up finding that I, it turned into, well, it was already a passion. It's my life. I provide long-term housing and I am proud of that in this community, and I have for 23 years. So, but I also, as I recently admitted, arrived here in a truck as a kayak guide, living out of my truck. So I feel like I've lived all the sides of our community's housing issues. But more importantly, I feel like I have really tried hard to network in this last year and figure out what all different segments of the community think about this and want to see happen. I have not relied on my own experience. So, yeah, I would, I would like to say that though I have not been on housing up, nobody, well, nobody has been in this, but I've certainly been a big part of my life in the last year. And, and prior to that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments from the board? And the, the new committee that will be starting, we can participate in their meetings by listening and engaging. So we're excluded from that process either. And I appreciate everyone's willingness to serve on this body, and you all do a really great job. So I agree that whatever happens, you're both going to be doing that. Tommy?
My perspective as a former board supervisor was that I was serving as the public safety supervisor, which was both the police and the fire department during the time that we lost Alaska State Troopers. And I elected to stay on the public safety supervisor because of the, the kind of the crisis status that we were under. Because I had had a lot of background working into it. So I probably stayed on that as a supervisor of that area longer than I should have or might have to get a more rounded view of what everybody does. I was never on Parks and Rec, I was never on roads because I, but I think it was helpful to leave that, those contracts. And so that's got to be a consideration. If somebody has been putting a lot of energy in, like in the Housing and Economic Development, we've just had an election. And it's been a big deal with the whole community about Holden Hills and beforehand about affordable housing. So I would understand if somebody was staying on that or had an investment in that instead of moving on for variety's sake, to carry that expertise collected and continue it.
Thank you. If I don't hear any other comments, thirsty hands, I'll call for, roll call vote for the motion that we're discussing.
Okay, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for that discussion and being honest, too. So now we need to do co-chair or chairs. Are there any thoughts on this to start? And we have about 20 more minutes, just so you know.
I'd like to say from Mike, sorry, go ahead, Guy.
No, I was, yeah, I was just asking for a little feedback from the current co-chairs, maybe of your thoughts on it, just, I know it's a lot of work, but I'd like to hear, if you don't mind, what you guys, how you feel about it.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
I was just gonna say the question of chair or co-chairs, I think the co-chair model works really well. And I'd like to, I think we should stick with that if we can.
Thank you, Mike. I would agree in my limited time being a co-chair, especially in our community and in this, the sides of our board, having co-chairs is. I couldn't imagine having just a chair. Any other comments? Or motions? But Guy asked a question, oh, so I would say that I have enjoyed and I appreciate my fellow cohorts nominating me for co-chair. And I have been slowly more comfortable in the role. And I am happy to do it again, should they, should they wish that I continue being co-chair. And I think it was a year, not two years. Overhand, am I left?
Yeah, I would like to advocate for a change. And so I'd like to see a different set of co-chairs, just so that we are spreading the work balance, but also representing a variety or a broad spectrum for the community. And so that is just my two cents.
I have a question for you, Jennifer. Do you feel like you have a time, being the short word, for a co-chair position?
Uh, yes. But I'm also open to other people doing it as well.
Okay. Amanda?
I nominate Jennifer for co-chair.
Thank you, Amanda. Any discussion on, or well, not discussion, Jerry?
Yeah, I just make a comment that it might be good to have one of the co-chairs be existing to have the experience. And like, Brianna, you, you do a good job, Mike does a good job. But maybe have you be a co-chair and somebody else be a co-chair, somebody new. That's just my position. Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. That definitely has helped on my brief experience on boards, having one new and one outgoing or Guy? Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with Jerry's statement as well. I think he helped bring Mike along back in the day and, and, yep. And I, I think every meeting, Brianna, you're stronger and stronger. And so it seems like that would be a help. I could make a motion unless we want further discussion?
Uh, any other discussion? I am, and personally, just thank you, but I also don't, I don't have an attachment. I'm okay with not, not being in the chair. But I agree that we should have one that has been co-chair before and one that hasn't to change up our roles.
Guy want to make a motion?
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, and I, um, so I'd like to make a motion that, um, Brianna Sullivan and Jennifer Wingard are our co-chairs for the next year.
Thank you for the motion, Guy.
Second.
Second, second, Jennifer. Okay. Now, now the word of discussion. Are there any further discussion? Okay, seeing, hearing none. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero.
Wow, everybody.
Goodbye.
Okay, uh, if now is number, I see two hands up, but just, um, maybe it's passed, but number four is our next item on the agenda, but we also would probably need to touch on, um, when we can meet and the sooner the better for next week for, uh, one letter so far, but number four would be our next letter. So this is discussing HLB 2023 work plan and 2024 through 2028 five-year management plan to prepare comments before their June ninth comment deadline. So.
Um, Brianna, may I?
Yes, yes.
Um, I, I actually have to get going. I'm really sorry. Um, and I look forward to seeing what comes with the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Thanks for joining this afternoon, Amanda.
Thank you all and, uh, look forward to our next year. Bye.
Thanks, Amanda.
So in our, in our time left this afternoon, um, we could talk through any points on the work program that we really would like addressed in the letter and then also choose two people to work on this letter and, uh, do a doodle poll for proving that letter. So any suggestions on that?
I, I got a quick question, Brianna.
Yes.
Um, does it violate our, our policy if between now and whenever the letter is drafted to, um, email or contact, um, points or, or items on this letter to the people that are drafting it from a GBOS member? Or do they need to be addressed now? You know, if I, if I have comment as a citizen, can I do send those to, um?
Well, if you comment as your supervisor role, I would send it to Margaret. Um, instead of whoever's working on the work. And then your statements that you'd like to go in the letter need to be for sure. Um, if you want all of us to be sure they're in there, you could say them right now, the ones you're thinking of. So at the earliest time record. If anyone has a clarification for my answer, please speak up.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, any communication you want for the draft letter, um, by the author, send it to Margaret. Margaret can tabulate that and, and share it with the people who are, are writing the letter.
Thanks, Kyle. And that would also save time, Guy, if you're thinking you have a specific sentences you'd like to see, then that would need to go to Margaret if you're not writing the letter.
Yeah, no, that, that answers it perfectly. I do have, I don't know, maybe questions, comments, but, um, yeah, no, I, I could do that as well. So I just don't know if we got time in the next fifteen minutes to get through all this. So I'm just looking for another way to write input.
Great. And I have, uh, gone through this and had, have my own list of suggestions to go in a letter or be working through Margaret with. So I'm open to working on the letter or I'm discussing some of those now, but they're mostly in the computer, but I haven't abstracted it. So.
Well, I'm
Go for it, Jennifer.
Personally recommend that we jump into it to the extent that we can and at least, at least get a sense of the body on some certain points. I mean, I suspect there are gonna be some points that are pretty crystal clear on this.
Okay, so that's okay. We'll look at page fifteen first. Is there anything that anyone would like mentioned from, from the, that's in the work program at page fifty? Or on page fifteen, there's something there that could be there? Okay, um.
Um, I, I guess I got, I got one just a clarification on page twelve, other projects.
Oh, I guess I'm looking at a different page packet. So what's page twelve?
Page, page twelve of the plan.
He's working with this. Do you want, do you wanna see it?
Kyle has it up there too, but I don't know if it's from the packet page.
Right there are other projects, right there.
Okay, so other projects. There we go. Yes.
Just verification, if, if that, I, I know there's a lot going on down there, but, um, if there's improvements and additional permits identified and, um, just a verification that that's a correct statement. I wish I knew more about it, but I know, um, maybe Kyle's been working on that too, or.
Uh, the permits would be the, the permities that have been brought in the last, uh, year. Um, so I think there's like five new permities that are down there. Uh, maybe six. So, um, if your question's about additional permits, that's, that's what they um, have talked about. And I know they've talked about trying to identify more areas. Um, but I think that all goes back to what they're gonna do for phase two and three improvements, uh, ongoing, which it, you know, is a vague statement.
But we are definitely in discussions with them or they are definitely pursuing that from what I understand, correct?
Correct. They're trying to find a, a long-term solution for the, um, issues that are occurring there and, and the demand that is need, is asked for there.
And it would probably muddy the waters to try to put more detail into that, into this plan right now.
What detail do you think would you like to see? Are you thinking, are you considering?
Um, I don't know, just, just, I, I don't know exactly what's going on there, but to itemize those out, um, maybe we don't need to, cause that'll limit us in the end as well. If they're not listed, so, um, I just give some input on that.
Yeah, I would, I would probably say that with the huge turnover in staff there, they're probably in the same boat as well as they don't fully know what's going on there either. And they need to, uh, figure that out. Um, which with the lack of a director is a big issue right now.
Okay. So yeah, no, we can leave it as is. I just wanted to, hopefully need more clarification, but.
Jennifer, do you have something for that one?
No, it's not connected to that.
Okay. I was, my comments on industrial park could tag with that one, just I have basically a statement of, for years, GBOS has been asking that Gerwood Industrial Park be, uh, upgraded or plotted or doing all the things that was in previous plans, like 2018 and 2019 probably. Uh, and just address that, that it's, could have more details. And it's been, been repeatedly asking more than each year, basically for upgrades that they essentially pay for, but it is to their mission, which is the, uh, quality of all the municipality, even if they pay for some of it. Serving all the municipalities. Uh, any other comments on that page? Or?
I don't have a comment about that page, but I have a backup comment. And I, so can I do that or not?
Yes.
Um, and I'd be particularly interested, Mike, in your viewpoint on this too, cause I think we talked about this. Remember when we had this, you guys all remember when we had the board, or we, we did a work session just on this, uh, oh, sorry, on the previous five-year plan draft. And I really noticed under land management objectives, that the main things that we were objecting to as a community about Holton Hills aren't, aren't even on, a lot of that isn't even on this land management objective. So in other words, we have, they, they state, for example, that they wanna make sure that the property interests are protected from insect damage and plant disease and invasive species, but there's no mention of economic, uh, out of all these land management objectives, there's no mention of negative impact on the local economy. And I think that fundamentally, that's what a lot of the objection to Holton Hills came down to. I mean, I think that's why it was the Chamber of Commerce that objected to it first was that it was gonna exacerbate our current, what we're currently hamstrung by more than anything else in our local economy is the lack of housing for a workforce. So I, I wondered if as G boss, if we could state that we would like to see, but Mike, I know you've done a lot of thinking about this, so I'd be interested in your viewpoint on that.
Mike?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think the, um, I think from our perspective, the, what HLB's purpose is and how they, yeah, basically how they approach, how they approach things seems to be in conflict with what's, uh, important and what's valid, what's, um, you know, what we as a community need. Um, so I think there's some illustrative examples of that probably. Well, I mean, Holton Hill is a good illustrative example of that. Uh, where the, you know, where effectively the, um, the benefit to the bottom line for HLB was a priority over cost to the community. And, um, the, you know, the opportunities for the community were kind of ignored in the process. So while I don't see any value in litigate, relitigate in Holton Hills itself, I think the, the general, the general principles there, we absolutely should bring up and, uh, and bring to the fore. Um, I think there are some other missing things here as well. Um, so one of the, one of the things HLB was tasked to do this year basically is, um, inventory some, uh, their, their land for the purposes of lower cost housing and then do several other steps after that. And while they've done the inventory, which I think they mentioned in here, um, and will be presenting on in the HLB AC meeting in about seven or eight minutes. Um, they don't address the other follow-up tasks they're meant to be doing, uh, within the work plan. So I didn't see anything in here about that. Uh, so that's another missing area. And I would just reinforce again, the industrial park has been kind of, you know, they did the initial work and then not much else has been done since then. And that's a, the, the lack of any movement on the industrial park and the, the lack of, um, going beyond temporary permits is, is stifling a lot of economic development in our town. So that also has to be treated as a higher priority and is a real priority.
Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, Jennifer. Kyle?
Uh, just for a timing reason, I have to be out of here at one thirty of ten at HLB advisory meeting and, uh, Margaret just texted me and said, try to get the date for your special meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Can I, can I suggest if there aren't any other, um, high-level comments in the next, next minute or two, we, uh, we move on to exactly that?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mike.
Okay, one thing about this. So I, I think Mike and I might be agreed then that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would like to see this, the management object, I would like to see G boss take on these management objectives and have them match our community objectives a little more or could give HLB specific suggestions so we can avoid issues with developers getting caught in the middle.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that. And the page numbers is well, two. Uh, could we also, in the next few minutes then, could we, are we able to choose two people to work on this letter with Margaret? And choose a meeting day? What would the body like to do first?
I, I would, I'll volunteer for, I'll volunteer for working on the, um, summarizing the issues and come up with a response.
Thank you, Mike. Any, Jennifer?
I would volunteer as well.
Okay. And you're good. Hopefully we'll have this meeting really soon.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jennifer is also offering to work on the letter and the objections. Okay, we have Mike and Jennifer working on this letter with Margaret and for time suggestions, Margaret has, uh, offered a lot of next week and in that some of us may prefer evenings coming up, but it's also important to offer, uh, midday opportunities. So is anyone available Tuesday evening? Thirty of May? Or Wednesday? Late afternoon evening? Or any of those afternoons? Those would be the earliest.
I can, I can try to attend.
Oh, it's on screen.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're basically live doing the polling?
Yes.
Any, any, uh, conflicts with what's on there? And of course, Amanda will get back later. Perhaps evenings are good for her.
Friday is, Friday is my only day. I don't know if anybody can meet during the day of any, you know, daytime at any of those or if the facility is available, but Friday is my only day that I.
In the daytime, Guy, you're saying?
In the evening.
At four thirty?
Yeah, those are all evening meetings, so that Friday is the only one, but you know, that's just me.
Are you saying it's the only one you can make?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I can make that into.
And
That's actually, that's the most difficult for me. That's the most difficult for me. It's not impossible. It's the most difficult. I can rearrange some things.
And Guy and Jennifer, then to both of you, could any of those pre, prior days during the day work?
Yes.
There's.
Um, no to Monday, uh, not, probably, uh, Wednesday is tricky and Tuesday, uh, so I'm just in spotty internet, so I have to see if I can.
Okay.
So.
All right. One more minute, two more minutes. Any suggestions from Mike or Guy?
Can we just have Margaret send out doodle poll and then who, whoever we get a quorum on, we have the, um, meeting?
Yeah, I think she's, she'll be just pleased that we got as far as we did and probably eliminate some.
It sounds like Friday is probably the most doable at this point, the sixth. So, um, we'll confirm that again, um, but yeah, uh.
It's the second.
The second.
I hear you.
Yep.
Six, two.
Yep, six, two. So, uh, that sounds like the most doable right now in the group. Um, they'll give her somebody to go with. She's just making sure to get bros here, so.
All right. Help me. Give us kind of a bit of time too, actually. Anything else from the board? I don't wanna run up against the HLB meeting too many start on time. Okay, so take the packet with the work program and five-year plan and submit your comments. And, uh, thank you very much for being open to meeting and discussing all these items this afternoon. Thank you, Kyle. Good luck at HLB meeting. Anything else? Uh, public comment?
Are we setting another meeting for the airport?
That agenda will probably include our letter for the airport and that would be decided and it's probably gonna be next Friday.
Yes.
And we can be present to that.
Yes.
It's the open meeting.
All right.
Even if it's special, it's open to the public. Hey, is there anyone here for public comments? All right, I'll ask for, oh, cut, Tommy?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure if it's uh, the five-year, the one and five-year plans from Heritage Land Bank. Um, I wonder if they bring things forward from former, um, one and five-year plans. Um, or if the world started when Bronson took, you know, and took office. Um, because, uh, for example, the, the cemetery here has been on one and five-year plans. Um, for a long time, but don't appear anywhere. I've been looking for it, knowing if I'm gonna be able to find it in, I guess I can look back at history, but they don't know where their five of the cabinets are for the HLB. I'll continue to look. I'm concerned that they may have stopped thinking about it or don't know about it or something like that.
Right. Thank you. I didn't mean to say it right. Thank you. Uh, thanks. Any, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Kyle.
Are you, are you talking?
Yeah.